Good evening and welcome. It's the Town Board meeting. It is January 8th, 2013. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. We're coming back after holidays and a very pensive time in many ways, I think, this year. The holidays were marred for all of us and I think the children that were lost in Newtown, Connecticut hurt us in ways that we didn't expect. I didn't expect to feel it so deeply. And I hope that you will understand when I tell you that as a town supervisor, I intend to work with other supervisors and mayors in Dutchess County, starting with a meeting that's going to take place in February when we first get together as supervisors and mayors, to really dive into the issue of how can this happen to a small community like Red Hook? And what can we do? What can we say about it? How can we go on record about it? And encourage politicians to not just talk about it, but to come up with something that makes a difference. I can't speak for the rest of this board, but I can speak for myself. I've been comfortable with guns in our house as a child and as an adult, with sportsmen throughout my life, and I certainly understand the Second Amendment. But I also understand that automatic weapons on the market for anyone cannot end up in a good thing. I just feel that that -- we have to draw a line with that. And so if we could encourage politicians that make decisions to say enough of that, at least a decision will be made that has brought us to some satisfaction that maybe we can prevent this kind of thing from happening again. So I hope that your holidays were good and restful and that we can start off the new year with good work. We have a full agenda tonight. It's our night-to-do reorganization. And so that will happen toward the end of the evening because we have some other business to do. I will be putting off the Town Supervisor's Report, which is typically the first meeting that we have every month, but because we're closing the books this year and Debbie is really pulling together a lot of information and paying a lot of bills, we thought we would wait and give you the final financial report, if not at the next meeting, the following. I have been asked every year to announce from the Association of Towns the fact that they will be hosting yet again the annual training school and annual meeting of the Association at the Hilton New York Towers in New York City, February 17th to 20th, 2013. It's a training session for town officials. Unhappily, we have had to cut this expenditure from the budget for the last several years. It was a wonderful training session. I still think it's a wonderful training session, but it is an expense that the board has felt that we have to manage, at least for the time being, and we hope that we can, once again, in the very near future, enjoy those meetings and the trainings are wonderful. I did need to make this announcement, and so, again, it is beginning at 3:00 on Sunday afternoon in February 17th at the New York Hilton. And this year, there is a change in the agenda for the Justice and Court Clerks where classes this year will be held at the Hilton in New York. There is a general opening session then. We probably should designate someone to be our delegate in case one of us is willing and able to go on the Wednesday morning to vote on some of the issues. And I will share with you all of these articles. And I'm hoping that one of us can go. I would be willing to be the delegate depending on the weather. I'm a little bit nervous about high snow, having gotten caught down there one time in terrible snow. And so I would be willing to do it, go down on the Wednesday morning maybe and attend that meeting. It's a 10:00 AM meeting, so it would be an early start. And I was hoping one of you would volunteer to be an alternate if I cannot do that. Is there anyone willing and able to do that?
I'd do it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Harry. So I move that I would be nominated as the delegate and Harry the alternate for this annual meeting on Wednesday, the 20th. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sure you've noticed that Councilman Ross is not with us tonight, and we will be hearing from him about an issue that he took responsibility for, and that is the Echo Valley Lighting District, which he, last time we met, said that he would do an analysis of the old maps and the new maps and the information that we have from Central Hudson, and he would make a recommendation to the board. And he told me on the phone that he would definitely do that, and he would try to get it done by the first meeting in February, the second Tuesday in February. So we're going to hold him to it. Dutchess County has announced, our county executive has announced, that there will be a major opportunity for municipalities in Dutchess County to apply for funding that is available through the county for shared services plans. And applications for these plans will be available to municipalities in mid-January, within the next few weeks. And they're looking for solid applications that show attempts on the part of municipalities to cooperate together with the objective of saving money and providing efficiencies in local governments. I've been meeting with the two mayors, Mayor Ed Blundell and Mayor Brian Cranna, and intend to continue doing that. And I really feel committed to pushing for shared services among us. We've been successful. Teresa has helped us lead the way in sharing a space, a highway garage in 2012, that now houses both the town and the village highway department. And that is just the beginning. We have other shared services going on, but we believe there are many more things we can do and should do. And I just wanted to say that I am committed to pushing forward with that in the year Sadly, Dutchess County had fewer funds for community development block grant applications that had been submitted by all of us. I think there was almost every municipality in Dutchess County submitted a request for funding. And the county has received $2.1 million in requests for what amounted to available funds of only $880,000. Red Hook was not one that received the funding request that we had submitted. The committee on which I serve and chair did our very best to evaluate fairly all of the applications. And there were strict criteria and weighted judgments about it, and I think the committee did a good job. The staff did a good job. I just regret that there isn't more money there, and I'm afraid to say that there won't be more money there from the federal government to the county, to the local municipalities. So we are going to have to find ways that we can make up for these critical projects that we have in the past, turn to community development block grant like sidewalks and improvements in our infrastructure. And all of us are going to have to be creative and find ways to do those things because the money is just not what it used to be. It's probably less than half of what it used to be, in my experience, and that's 10 years on that committee. So I have a resolution that we all have signed for a woman who, it doesn't seem possible, is retiring because she's so young and beautiful, but she is retiring from the New York State Police Department, who is a local Red Hook resident, and I would like to honor her by saying that Lisa Laffran has served for 20 years in the New York law enforcement as an officer with unfailing dedication to the principles of the New York State Police. And so here are the whereas's. Whereas Captain Laffran is well-known for her honesty, dedication, fairness, and professional demeanor, her achievements through her career include promotions from investigator to sergeant, sergeant station commander, zone sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. And whereas Lisa is known and commended for her intelligence, her compassion, and her willingness to help others, whereas Captain Laffran, through an outstanding performance, has received recognition from the highest level of law enforcement. Now therefore be resolved that I sue T. Crane, Supervisor of Town of Red Hook, together with the Town Board and on behalf of our residents, do hereby honor and pay tribute to Captain Lisa D. Laffran. We wish her and her family great pleasure and many happy years of retirement. And it's stated and signed by each of us, this day, January 8th, 2013. We're very, very proud. She's a member of our community, a voice scout leader, and a wonderful, wonderful resident. I would hope that someone, one of us, could attend her retirement party. If not, we'll -- are you going? That would be wonderful, Paul. If you would deliver this for us, I'll make sure you get it. Thank you. In fact, shall I give it to you now? Thank you, Paul. And yes, I would like to vote on that. May I hear a motion to that effect?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Paul, for delivering that for us. Okay. I think that's what I have, and I'll turn to the rest of you for announcements, maybe starting with Sue. Would you like to give a report and then your financial announcements?
This is the last Town Clerk report for 2012, and it is for December. Total local shares remitted to Supervisor, $2,091.55. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for the spay and neuter program, $82. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $67.50. Amount remitted to New York Department of Racing and Wagering, $15. An amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $351.45, for a total state, county, and local revenues of $2,607.50. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just have a few little announcements. As of yesterday, I had about 4,400 tax bills delivered to my office, and my deputy and I are right now in the process of sorting, changing some addresses, sorting out the banks. So the bills will probably be mailed out no later than January 22nd. So everybody, watch your mailboxes. If you do not receive a bill, please call me. I'll be very happy to get one for you.
We still look forward to hearing from you.
Excuse me?
We still look forward to hearing from you.
You can always stop and get one.
There is something, and if I may make this point. Last year, one of our residents came in, and it happened to be a school bill, but the bill was sent to the wrong address and was not delivered to her. And as a result, she paid a penalty for late fees when she finally got it, a month or more late. So if you have changed your address in Red Hook, it would be important to let Sue McCann's office know that, so that as much as we don't love to have these delivered, it's worse to have them delivered late, so.
We do make every attempt to try to locate the residents. But actually, technically, you really have to contact the assessor's office, and they're the ones that will make the change.
Oh, okay.
We've also, as of the end of December, started selling recycling permits. We've sold approximately 375. The recycle center is selling them, and they had like a record day on Saturday, 142 they sold for us. So that was excellent. So come on in and get your recycle permits. It's $15 for one, $18 for two, for the same household. We also received a message from Royal Carding, and that is the garbage company that is allowed to be at the recycle center on Saturdays. And they said, "This is to inform you that due to the enforcement of New York State Department of Environmental Conservation regulations, the Saturday hours for the town's recycle center, as far as the garbage goes, will be from 7:30 to 12:00 noon." And that was effective as of January 5th. Right now, the recycle center hours are still 8:00 to 1:00, but the gate should be open 7:30, at least for the garbage to be dropped off, if you want that. I have also distributed to the Town Board members and supervisor the Town Clerk financial report for 2012 and the financial report for Receiver of Taxes, and that's required by law that I distribute those, and I've done so in a timely manner. And I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Great.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, starting with Bill on my right. Do you have any announcements?
No. Happy New Year. Good to see you all here.
And Brenda?
Yes, I have a couple of announcements. First is that on January 19th, the Red Hook Recycles Group is sponsoring a free townwide electronic waste recycling. There will be pickup in the Red Hook Village Municipal Parking Lot. It's also combined with a food drive, so this is from 10:00 AM till 1:00 PM, January 19th, in the Village Parking Lot. Electronic waste that is accepted includes televisions, monitors, computers, fax machines, scanners, printers, cell phones, et cetera, basically everything with a cord except appliances. So this is a partnership between the 10% Challenge, the Town of Red Hook, the Village of Red Hook, and Bard College. Also --
And what's nice to announce now, actually, our recycle center will accept these electronic wastes as part of your recycle.
If you have a permit to use the recycling center, any Saturday or Wednesday, you can also drop off your electronic waste for no extra fee. The 10% Challenge, actually, although 20% Challenge is still promoting energy audits in the town, they're free for most people. And if you have questions about that program, you can email askenergyexpert@gmail.com. And then we have a personal invitation to the Town Board members from our CAC chairperson to go to her house on Friday evening from 6:00 till 7:00 PM and hear the results of her own energy audit. That's all.
Thank you, Brenda. And I would like to lastly say that we talked about doing reorg tonight, which is to say that we establish the way we do business for the year ahead. And one of the things that we've always talked about is getting closer to the communities around us, particularly the villages that are part of the Town of Red Hook. And so this year, we're going to try, for the first time since I've been supervisor, to hold a meeting in Tivoli. The second meeting of the month in February, we will hold at Watts de Peister Hall. And it's -- I think it would be a way of reaching out to the residents of Tivoli and hearing what's on their mind, especially during public commenting. We always enjoy hearing from residents during public comment, and it's a long way sometimes on a cold winter night to go all the way into Red Hook. So we'll hold our meeting on February 27th at Watts de Peister Hall on the third floor. And that's all we have. Is there any public comment tonight before we begin the agenda? Yes?
Will the CAC be commenting on the hydro fracking that the DEC is accepting comments on?
I don't know. They have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, we've been submitting our own personal comments through a couple different, like, web avenues, but not as an official body. I think we've all been doing it to, like, increase the amount of comments, you know, in the public commentary.
Supposing they'd end January 11th, but they're thinking of extending it. So if anyone hasn't gotten their comments, then please do.
Yeah, there's a very helpful web form if you're interested in commenting. I think it's called 30 Days of Fracking, where somebody has, like, made this whole form that it's very easy then to submit your comments to the correct DEC body. So if you Google it, I think it's 30 Days of Fracking.
30 Days of Fracking?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for comments. Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Hearing none, let's begin with the first item on the agenda. And it is a response to Mr. Gregg regarding a request to be on the agenda and talk to the Town Board about the farmer's market zoning code. So would you like to take a few minutes and do that, Mr. Gregg? Out of courtesy, we don't usually do this. This really comes before the Planning Board, not the Town Board, but out of courtesy to you, I'd like to have everybody hear what you have to say.
Good evening. I'm -- is this on? Yeah. I'm Norman Gregg. I'm a second-generation family farmer in Upper Red Hook. I'm here tonight to ask the Town Board for review from what I think is a mistake in the zoning code, in the zoning code. And I think it's not only a mistake, but I think it's damaging to agriculture as we know it in the agricultural business zone. I'll give you a little background. The requirement by the new code requires special permit and site plan for a farmer's market in the agricultural business district. This is an issue that I went to the intermunicipal about three years ago when they were drafting it. I suggested that that was inappropriate then. The intermunicipal I met again with on Monday, and I suggested again that I think it's inappropriate, and I'll tell you why. There seems to be some confusion about the difference between a farm stand, a farm market, and a farmer's market. A farm stand, farmers can sell as a matter of right whatever they grow in an open-air arrangement of shelves. A farm market is a store, and that is subject to site plan review because it's a permanent store and it has regular hours. A farmer's market is the same as the first one. It's an open-air arrangement of shelves where farmers sell what they grow direct to the public. And it's -- the Hudson Valley Farmer's Market, as we're doing it, is a collaboration of local farmers, each selling their own products. Since 1942, when my father started farming in Red Hook, our right as a farmer is to grow and harvest, and so will we grow. And Red Hook has long been enamored with the bucolic nature of agriculture, and we get a lot of enthusiasm in Red Hook about being the breadbasket in Dutchess County. And everyone loves our pastoral view, but it's always been difficult for Red Hook to get their mind around the commercial aspect that is agriculture. Now zoning normally talks about how we live, and setbacks and spacing and -- and on the Greg Farm, where we farmed, we farmed 30 years before zoning, growing and selling our own product, and then 20 years as non-conforming use in the one-acre residential zone, growing and selling our product, and then 10 years as non-conforming use in the three-acre residential district, growing and selling our product. When they first talked about an agricultural business zone, I was uncomfortable with it because unlike the zoning for the rest of Red Hook, we're not talking about how we live, we're talking about our livelihood, and we're talking about regulation that's passed by mostly non-farmers who don't really understand that much about how we grow and harvest and sell our crops. So when I'm told that I'm supposed to get, pay $250 to apply for a permit for us to sell our crops, I would suggest that that's a dangerous path because it's not very different than the pick-your-own-business that we've been doing since the 1950s. And, you know, we grow and sell our crop right in the field, and if you start telling us where we can sell and what we can sell and how we're going to access that field, we have nothing but space on a farm. We have a lot of room. It's not about having room enough for parking, you know? At this farmer's market, we have the best growers in Red Hook and surrounding area. We have noteworthy crops from the rest of the state of New York. And we, you know, I mean, what's the site plan going to do? Are they going to tell us that we have to have red pop-ups instead of blue pop-ups, instead of white pop-ups, or the Miggiorelli stand is going to have to be the first one in, and Feather Bridge is going to have to be the second one in? I don't understand it. It's undue regulation, it's inappropriate, and it interferes directly with our right to farm. So I'm asking for the Town Board to give us relief from what I think is a mistake in the zoning code. You have questions?
Anyone?
No.
Okay. I'd like to clarify that last statement you made. The request is to give Greg Farm relief.
No.
Is that what you're asking?
No, absolutely not. The code should be changed to say that a farmer's market in the Town of Red Hook should be as a matter of right, not by site plan approval. Not for application for site plan approval. I'm not looking for anything special for my farm. I'm looking for farming and --
Okay, I understand. I just wanted to clarify.
For farming and Red Hook to thrive.
Okay. And the farmer's market that you're proposing, is it only to sell your own product?
Each farmer sells his own products, yes.
Okay. So you're not proposing that the market that you are asking to initiate include other farmers selling there on that side? It's strictly your own product?
No. A farm market is where --
No, no, I'm asking you, are you, what are your intentions? To sell your own products or to sell yours and other products?
A farm market is where a farmer sells his own products and other products, and it's a store. That requires site plan approval. A farmer's market is a collaboration of farmers where they each come and they have their own little pop-up, and they each sell their own products. I'm not selling anyone else's products. We're selling, each farmer is selling their own products in the agricultural district zone, agricultural business zone. So where more appropriate than the agricultural business zone is a farmer's market, where we sell our own products. This is how we make our livelihood.
Okay. Thank you.
I could maybe add a little bit. After we met last week, I spent a good deal of time talking to Ag and Markets.
I haven't spoken to them yet.
Pardon?
I haven't spoken to them yet.
Well, I have a copy of, they faxed me their background information and their recommendations and how, and the ways that they would support and suggest we do, we handle farm markets and farmer's market, and they do make a distinction. I can give you a copy of that. We also have, I have a copy of those aspects of our zoning that directly relate to this. And you're correct, a farm market is actually a simple thing. It was intended, when we wrote the zoning, to provide a farmer with a very easy avenue for selling products that were farm products from that particular farm. for selling products that were farm products from that particular farm. A farmer's market becomes essentially a grocery store, and therefore it may require, and it is a farmer selling products on his farm, his or her farm, from many suppliers and many other farms, including fish, meat, whatever, whatever, and it requires a fairly extensive site plan because it essentially becomes a grocery store. A public grocery store, you have to go through whatever gyrations are necessary for public safety, health and safety, and anything else that applies to that. And those distinctions are rather important and are outlined and identified in the zoning. In fact, we expanded, in the zoning, we have not only farm market one, we have three versions of farm markets, singular. And farm market three was essentially added to a lot of things like tack box, tack shops and that sort of thing, just to use one example. The farmer's market gets well beyond that and becomes a rather significant establishment that goes beyond the limits of the town itself and requires the engagement of the Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera.
That's not true.
And it's, well, that's, well, I think if you read the Ag and Markets and you read our zoning, I have both of them here, that you'll find that basically that is true, and that is, that's the difference between the zoning. Ag and Markets has, and you might look on here on page five, what they call a streamlined site plan for a farm market, and our site plan requires actually less than Ag and Markets' suggested site plan.
We're not doing a farm market, we're doing a farmer's market.
I know, and that makes it much more complicated. Why don't you take this and read it, and perhaps we'll have to meet again. I'm not sure this is the right forum to do this in the casual basis.
I'll speak to Ag and Markets. I have to tell you, it's always a very sad day for me when we have to go to the state to interpret what right to farm is, when, to explain that to the community that supposedly embraces what we do for our livelihood. And so it's really, I didn't go to the state about this because I thought you could get to the right place about it without them. I'll go to the state and you get a second opinion from them as well.
Yes.
Norm, if I could, I mean, there's three categories of farm markets, but you're specifically saying not farm markets, but you're saying farmer's market.
Right.
Like what we have here on Saturday up at the village park.
Right. And it's nothing like a grocery store.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
No, we don't sell our product in Norman. We take it there and sell it ourselves. I sell fresh chicken and eggs at the market. You know, I bring it in, I bring my money in, I deal with my customers, I sell the product myself. Norman's not selling anything at the farmer's market. You know, it's not a farm market.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, I'm sure we'll sort it out. The next item on the agenda, unless someone else has anything to add, we'll move on to the next item. And it is a set of resolutions, two to be exact, that relate to youth delinquency programs that are sponsored by Dutchess County that we have participated in, our recreation program and the Red Hook Central School District has participated in for many years. And the resolutions relate to authorizing us to accept funding from New York State Office of Children and Family Services for Youth Development Delinquency Prevention Projects for 2013, on file with the Office of Family Services in Dutchess County Division of Youth Services and execution of documents in connection therewith. And so I would move that I be authorized to enter into that contract. In the case of the Youth Development Delinquency Prevention, the amount of money we will be applying for is $1,580. And in the case of the program that is conducted through the Red Hook Central School District Guidance Office, which is Conflict Resolution, Peer Mentoring, Bias Awareness Program, the amount of money being applied for is $1,417. I so moved.
Second?
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll submit these immediately to the program. We have, next on the agenda, a dog park discussion, and maybe we'll turn to our friend Paul Piastro, who has pulled together a committee, an impressive committee actually, of 13 volunteers so far as I know, who are all interested in collaborating with the village of Rhinebeck and developing on Rhinebeck's land, but in the town of Red Hook, a dog recreation park. So do you want to just tell us a little bit about that and where that's, where that is right now, Paul?
Okay. It's up at the intersection of Metzger and Stone Church. Those are the soccer fields there?
Yes.
And it's between the two main soccer fields is an area approximately, I would say about two acres in size that we want to fence off and make a dog park. We started this back in May, I believe it was, of last year, and we've been getting volunteers. I've been trying to scrounge materials, which we've been pretty successful in getting fencing. I got a donation of somebody to dig all the holes for the posts. I mean, anybody who knows how to dig posts, it's pretty difficult, especially over there, it's all rock. And I'm just working now on some posts and cement. I didn't realize at the time how government works, the pace of it.
Yeah, how speedy is this?
I was hoping that this would go down immediately, but, so we're working on that part. Basically, it's an intermunicipal agreement between the town of Rhinebeck and the town of Red Hook. There would be a fee, a permit to use the park, a minor fee of $20. So there'd be some control over who uses the parks, there'd be a tag issued, and I'm assuming that the money's handled through the town clerk. The owners would be on their own, basically, under certain rules to use the park, and anybody who goes online and researches dog parks can understand that there's a lot to it, how to separate the dogs and not allow certain species in there and so on. One problem we ran into is we do not have a water source there, but Rhinebeck did buy a water tank, and they're going to have it, they're going to fill it over at the town place over there and bring it to water. We're depending a lot on volunteers to be stewards of this park. In other words, we'll be giving our own time to bring water over, to help clean the area, and also to construct it. We're doing all volunteer construction on this dog park. And I'll let the town know when that is so you can put something out so we get more Other than that, I'm assuming in future years, we may be coming to the town board for some minor costs in the future. This year, I didn't understand or not, but in the future, we may need some operating costs, very minor again, but again, we're looking for mostly donations to get this thing going. My dog is waiting breathlessly for this. I promised him many times. So that's about it. I can take any questions if anybody, we did the site plan approval. I don't know if that was approved by the zoning here or not, but that's in the process. And I think that's the last step, other than doing the paperwork and getting the forms done and so forth. So if there's any questions, anybody?
When do you expect to be open?
I don't know. I'm pushing for the spring. As soon as the ground thaws, I mean, it's all rock anyway, but as soon as the ground thaws, it'll start to be, you know, I've got to find some cement someplace. I need 60 bags of cement.
So the town of Rhinebeck has passed a local law?
Yes.
That enables them to levy fees and conduct this business with, I presume, insurance and other matters that when a town sponsors something has, have to be considered? Do you, is it expected from the town of Red Hook? Would it not be appropriate for the town of Red Hook to pass its own local law?
Absolutely.
Regarding its citizenry and the participants there?
I think for your own liability, you need to protect yourself.
Right.
Part of the permit will be a form that the applicant will fill out with some kind of waiver on it.
Okay.
And I don't know how much juice that holds, but there'd be some type of minor waiver on there too. And also the signs posted at the park would also limit, help to limit liability, but you never know these days.
And is there, is there a maximum capacity that we need to be concerned about in terms of the space involved and how many dogs that can...
The area is approximately 400 by 450. You have to separate two sizes of dogs, above 30 pounds, below 30 pounds. So you've got basically two areas that are approximately 200 by 200 approximately. So in a space 200 by 200, how many dogs can you hold safely without them ganging up on each other? You can go again online and look that up. I think we could hold a fair number.
Okay.
I don't expect we'll get, you know, 100 dogs at once, but, yeah, I don't know for sure.
And I'm just trying to...
There's enough land there, we can always expand in the future.
Okay.
If need be, we can move and fence, you know, probably another 50 feet in each direction.
The other board members, Brenda, since you're our dog liaison, would you have questions or concerns or, you know, comments?
Not really. Bruce came before the planning board the other night, and I heard his talk, and it sounds like they're considering everything. Needs to be considered. One thing that had been mentioned in Rhinebeck, I guess, was that the space is not so visible. There was some concern about safety.
Yeah, there was, one person who did, was concerned about that, walking from the park to not down to where this dog park is. And honestly, I don't have a solution. I mean, if you want to put electricity in, fine, but it's expensive. There's no other place to put the dog park. There's a small area of grass there, but they use that for some parking when there's an overflow. So there really is no other place in that vicinity to put the dog park. And honestly, I don't have a suggestion for her other than the hours that she goes to use the dog park. I just, I don't have a solution for that.
What would be the hours of use for the dog park?
Most dog parks are like sunrise to sunset, and that's something we'd have to look at. I know there is a vandalism concern up there too. And again, the stewards, are they going to be responsible for going every night to lock the gate and so forth? And that's a manpower concern. So I haven't thought about what hours to actually close, but I know a lot of them that I've researched go sunrise to sunset, you know, which is obviously a lot shorter this time of year to close at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. That's tough, especially if you're working, you want to come home, take your dog up there. It's tough during the winter. And I hope we open it year-round. I hope we can do that, get somebody to plow that little area there.
Bill or Harry, do you have any questions?
No. There was an issue of the planning, paying a planning board fee. Did we resolve that? We ended up paying a fee to ourselves, but it didn't make us...
Would you like to make a motion to waive that application fee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Doesn't make sense to charge ourselves, does it? Thank you, Paul. Thank you for your volunteerism. And one thing that occurred to me as you were talking is, is the park to be open whether or not there are volunteers there as kind of overseers?
Yes, yeah, we'd have to do that.
Yeah, right.
But I can't see where, you know, getting into a scheduling...
Yes, yes. Right. Right, I just want to make sure I was envisioning it.
We didn't have it open all the time, but it would have to periodically be visited to just help clean it and so forth, take care of the poop bags and stuff.
So it wouldn't be locked up? It would be, the gate would be accessible?
Honestly, I haven't, you know, I haven't thought about locking it at night.
Right.
I don't know.
Okay.
There'd probably be no need to because there's nothing really to steal in a dog park.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I imagine we will thrash out the details of a local law if we intend to have one, and we won't do it tonight, but have you, have you questions, Christine?
Oh, I will, and maybe we could ask Brenda and Paul, maybe we could ask Brenda and Paul to meet with me to go through what's needed to coordinate with the town.
Okay.
Okay. Set that up.
Okay. So do you want to set a date tonight, or do you want to, give them a call? Okay, okay, fine. So we come to the fourth on the agenda, which is the Conservation Easement Review Committee has presented to us a final report, and we thank them for that. And I see there are members of that committee with us. Thank you for taking the time to spend on this issue since we frankly didn't know exactly what to do with it. And each of us who sit up here, I'm sure, have different ideas about how this could and might be addressed. So Mary Ann, I guess you chaired the committee. Do you, do you have any comments? This has been laid on the desk. I don't think we're going to make a decision. This is a pretty comprehensive...
Yeah, I would imagine.
Yeah.
No, I would just, if I could, take a few moments to thank the board. I know you were all several months ago in the process of, you know, contemplating removing the program, and several of us spoke out foolishly. When you speak out, you stand here. But I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to review the program and provide you with some of our thoughts. Also, I'd like to thank my committee members who, through, you know, my busy schedule and their busy schedule, we managed to get through this. You know, I think we had six or seven meetings. So I'd like to thank John, Douglas, Chris Kane, and Sarah and Boden, as well as Troy Bietz, who's not here tonight. So I appreciate their effort and their time.
We want to thank them too. I know how diligent you all were.
There was one month there. I don't know what happened, but we just couldn't get together. So just sort of as some background, I'm sure you're all aware, but in case some of the folks sitting here aren't aware, the town currently has a conservation easement program where landowners with 10 contiguous acres or more can agree to not develop their land in, and in exchange, they can be considered for a reduction in their assessed value. We took a look at our program, which I believe we established in 2005 or '06, if I remember incorrectly, and compared that to some other things that are going on in other towns, as well as, you know, we looked at it in the context of things that have changed here in Red Hook. We tried to evaluate how many, you know, parcels was still out there that could be eligible, you know, to pursue the program. We looked at some other towns and laws that they had in place. And essentially, if you take a look, when you get a chance, at the first page of our report, you know, we're saying you should essentially keep the program. It is a conservation option. The town has devoted a lot of time and effort and energy into updating its plans and its zoning code to preserve the rural character of the town, agriculture in the town, et cetera. And this is an option for some of those parcels that aren't big enough to be considered for other programs like selling their development rights, et cetera. We looked at possibly increasing those term periods, making them a little longer, including some stricter penalties, and we gave you some... And we gave you some examples, even ours. There are penalties in our current law. We feel they could be a little stricter to make sure that when somebody's considering it, they take it seriously. We do feel that we need to find a way to make sure they do get the reductions because if they're not going to get a reduction, they are not going to participate. And, you know, ensure that there's a process in place to make sure that that parcel is worthy of the reduction that they are seeking. One of the things the town could take a look at is seeking state enabling legislation, such as the town of Red Hook did. And that would resolve some of the issues that we've talked about. We'd also need to consider having a monitoring committee to make sure that these easements were in fact being enforced. We also contemplated some ideas that, I'm not sure the town attorney's going to be happy with this, but, um, consider having an enrollment period instead of just this wide open, you can apply whenever you want, you know, so we could, you know, clean up the process and have, I think, better control of it, as well as maybe limit the number of easements that you accept per year so that you are, you know, mindful of your budget and, you know, what we're, what you're trying to accomplish. So those were just some of our thoughts. There's pages up here of information for you to read. We could take a look at, you know, what some of the tax implications could be. We, you know, picked some parcels out randomly and said, hey, if these 38 were to go in the program, what would happen? So that analysis is in there as well.
Mary Ann, could you just give, like, maybe an example of a kind of a parcel that where you think this would be most suited?
It'd be kind of hard to do, but I mean, if you think about your community presentation plan and the parcels have already been evaluated and they've been put in the plan because they've been deemed worthy of some sort of protection, I think you could probably find some parcels in there that, you know, are 10 acres, between 10 and probably 30 acres that aren't necessarily going to be able to get, you know, PDR money. That would be, they might want to look at this kind of program. And it would be fulfilling the town's goals as well as, you know, hopefully their personal goals.
Dinner. PDRC, we should, it runs out this year. So that program would be-
That program would be.
So parcels eligible for this program may not be eligible for those other tools we have?
Correct. You know, it's about building up a package, you know, having multiple tools to try to achieve the town's plans.
In what way would this be impacted or controlled in terms of the quality of the land for farm use? We have a lot of land that's obviously plowed and it's a farm. We have a lot of other land that's a cliff and can't ever be a farm.
Right.
And how do those two types of land, the farmland would obviously qualify, the quality of farmability?
Well, if, I will say this. If you are farming and you are receiving the agricultural exemption-
Yeah.
You're, this isn't going to be any good. You're already receiving the break that you're going to get.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So it may help some beginning farmers who haven't quite hit the thresholds of receiving the ag exemption, it'll help to get them started. It may help retiring farmers who are trying to figure out what to do with their land, but they're not, you know, meeting the thresholds. So there's, you know, some possibilities there and there's probably more I haven't even thought of. In terms of the cliff lands, they're probably not going to be all developed because part of the criteria is, is this land available? So if it's a cliff, it's going to go through the process, it's going to be evaluated and you're going to say, there's not a whole lot of development potential there.
But if it's a hillside with a couple of flat pillows on it where you could put a house, even though it may not be suitable, reasonably suitable for farming, it would be, it would qualify for this.
Well, it would have to go through the process.
Yeah, right, I understand that.
I don't think there's a blanket, it qualifies and you get it. There's, there's going to be, you know, currently the program has criteria that these parcels are not eligible. And we're suggesting that that stays in place and maybe that criteria even has a second look. Mary Ann, we remember one of the also things that we discussed was, you know, the town and the villages have talked a lot about protecting gateways and it's often involves smaller parcels that may have development potential. And this could be an opportunity for a win-win situation where the town wants those parcels to not be either further developed or perhaps if they are undeveloped, to remain undeveloped in terms of a period of time where there's planning happening, like maybe if the town is going to go through a, next time it goes through a master planning project, you know, it might be nice to have those parcels stay in a certain way while that's happening. And then it could be, you know, a win for those landowners to receive a benefit for helping fulfill that public purpose. So that, you know, that's kind of one of the examples that we talked about was in gateway situations where you might even have multiple smaller properties come together to create the protection around those areas that you needed. There could also be opportunities where a property provides a buffer for something. It could provide a buffer for an agricultural property. It could provide a buffer along, you know, one of our scenic roads or historic roads or something like that where its key property may be 10 or less, or, you know, only around 10 or 12 acres. So it might not qualify for some of the other tools that we have, but this might be something that would work.
One question. Would properties which are larger than the properties we've been describing also be eligible for this program? Is it intended that it would potentially encompass 100 acre parcel or a 50 acre parcel?
I think so. I mean, potentially it could, but some of the other protection options that we have in the town might be better suited for those kinds, that size of parcel. So that's kind of, you know, as Mary Ann was saying, it's another tool in the toolbox when a property owner comes in and goes through the criteria evaluation process that's already in place to see which program it makes more sense for them to be in. We did not talk about having an maximum acre.
I, most of my concern in reading this, although I have a couple of concerns, but the monitoring committee concerns me. Just remembering, monitoring parcels is a big business. I mean, it's not a simplistic idea. And to assume that we would have trained volunteers in the future, you know, every year into the future, to provide this monitoring structure, to me is, if not unrealistic, very sketchy. That said, the other piece of it would be in terms of the value of the properties and how they are, how they are determined to be valued. Isn't that the assessor's job? It's to be uniquely his job forever and ever and that we are not to interfere with that, not town board members, not planning board members, and certainly not committee members or private citizens. To try to influence the determination of an assessor, I think, would be a big mistake. So I have that concern as Navy primary and some others regarding just reducing the value, the actual assessed value, total value in town. Remember, three or four years ago when the bottom fell out, we lost, in assessed value in the town of Red Hook, we lost $62 million of assessed value in one year. And as a result, the tax rate went way up. So it affected every taxpayer regardless of the value of their property. And I worry about that when I see anything that indicates that we're losing assessed valuation. It spreads the cost of the tax base over fewer and fewer people all the time. And I have a serious concern about that.
That's what our current program does. So if someone were to come in, that is essentially what happens. So that we have that in place in town today. In terms of the monitoring, I think that we would need to think about scaling it to what we have here and what our capabilities are. Would I tell you it's going to be perfect 100%? No, I don't think so. But I think that you probably need to have some element of, you know, taking a peek. I'm not saying you need to take a peek every week, but I think it would be valuable. And I do believe that there would be people interested in town in fulfilling that. Personally, I'm speaking personally. Well, actually, a lot of land trusts use trained volunteers to do their monitoring also. In that case, it's an annual requirement, so it's once a year. And once you have the baseline, you know, done from your first visit, then it's just checking to see, compare from year to year. And we do have, you know, some great volunteers in town. A number of people have gone through some really long-term training, like the biodiversity workshop. That was a lot of hours and a lot of time that people put into that. The CAC certainly already has put a lot of time into really developing the evaluation criteria that's currently used under the program we have in place now. So I agree with Mary Ann that I do think that there would be people in town who would be willing to take on that task of the monitoring.
We also, I want to speak to other towns who have monitoring programs and it didn't seem that that was as much of a burden. They have many more applicants or participants than we have, at least right now. Some of the towns, I don't know, have more than 25 for sure, participants. And monitoring didn't seem a big concern to them, but I think if we did decide to go ahead with the program, we'd want to do a better survey of those programs and really get a sense for what other towns are doing. But that was just, the monitoring didn't seem to be too much of a burden to them when we asked about it.
And when the files, looking through the files today, I noticed an estimate of monitoring costs per parcel are approximately $5,000 annually, per parcel for that, for that service or that function. And I can just tell you, we haven't got it, you know? We just haven't got it. So we'd have to look at this when we're building a budget next year and figure out between now and then, how much is it going to cost us? How many people are we talking about?
Well, obviously, the, you know, an endowment piece is around $5,000 so that you go into funding kickoff, the several hundred dollars a year that is the actual cost for the monitoring. So I'm not exactly sure what you were looking at, but, you know, my experience when I was working on this before, that's how we would set it up. We would say, what's the annual monitoring cost? And a fairly simple easement, particularly if it's a small piece of property and there's not going to be a lot of travel because we're in one town, you know, would probably be several hundred dollars a year. So at that point, we would work backwards and say, well, if we need to have that amount each year, what would we look for as a, in that case, a gift or a donation that we could have invested and the interest would provide that annual need? So I'm not sure where, I know $5,000 is a lot of times about where that number came out, so I'm not sure if that's where you had seen that number, but the annual costs were usually between, you know, $200, $200, $300.
And that included consulting fees or any other-
That was like staff time and photos and-
Is that, I don't know, is that addressed in here?
No.
The cost, the cost of monitoring?
No, it's not.
That's an additional cost probably to the property owner.
Well, the only-
In which case it might offset. One could, you could come up with a zero balance.
Well, that's why, the only way that we address it was by saying that would have to be bound costs or, you know, cost of cost.
Okay.
Any other questions, Brenda?
You know, I think that 5,000 may have come up when Winnicky and others had approached us about towns holding these small easements and they wanted to propose a way to solve that problem county-wide. I thought they were asking for 5,000 total from each municipality per year. I thought that that's where that number came from, but anyway.
Perhaps.
I do remember that conversation.
County supervisor? I'm the only noble-
I saw that, John, and I was so surprised.
And I felt it was important that I come this evening to explain my data. If I have my information correct, the program was put in place in '05 or '06 approximately.
Mm-hmm.
And we've had, if I understand correctly, approximately 12 applicants. Nine found out that their assessments would not change because they owned property with swamps or the property was improperly assessed and they were not going to get a reduction in their assessment. So they decided not to fulfill the procedure to get into the program. One gentleman pulled out of the program and went into the ag exemption program. And the other two are in the program. So that's 12 applicants in six years, if I have my numbers correct. We're talking approximately 243 parcels, approximately. If you take 240, if all these 240 decide that they want to join this program, if it is modified as suggested by the rest of the committee. I did not realize there was a fee for, that's part of the cost, to make sure that they have done nothing to their property. So obviously, there's got to be some sort of review and I did not take that into consideration when we were discussing all this. And I don't think, I don't think it came up in our discussions, Trubal. But if you take 240 and multiply by 100, that's 24,000, and then multiply it by two, because I think Chris Kane just said 200 to $300 a parcel. So we'll just use the $200 number. That's $48,000 right there. Then, I ran some tax numbers on the 38 parcels that we looked at as potential applicants of receiving this program. And you're looking at approximately $350,000 hit in taxes, school, town, fire, Red Hook Library, Tivoli Library, et cetera. $350,000 that the other parcels have to pick up. Now, very late in the game, I learned that the, it's not the town parcels that would be picking up this cost. It would be all parcels in the town. And I did not realize that. That includes Tivoli Village and the Red Hook Village taxpayers would have to pay for this cost. What they cannot take advantage of, which I find very disheartening, here we're forcing something upon them that they have to pay for, but they can't take advantage of. And there's five parcels that could take advantage of it in one of the two villages. And I don't know exactly what the layout is. I don't know how many parcels are in Tivoli and I don't know how many parcels in the village are Red. But there's approximately five. And they would not be able to take part of this program, but they would have to pay for it. The town assessor ran some numbers and taking a 2%- excuse me, I got the wrong piece of paper here. Just increasing our taxes by 2% over a 15-year period for 38 parcels. 15 years, per his numbers, Scott Hobson. You're looking at an expenditure by the town, the rest of the town taxpayers of 919,543 and 71 cents over 15 years. Those are some of the costs. And you have the paperwork up there and you can review it, et cetera. Then, what the committee has proposed is that we not have the assessor who has to go to training classes, to be trained to assess properties, and he has to continue with his CEUs every year, mandated training. That the assessor be taken out of the picture. And we have a committee that follows procedures delineated by the town board. And if the property owner basically meets the criteria, then I don't see how the committee could deny the property owner from the reduction in his taxes for his property. And I have a prom- And I have a problem with that. Town has hired an assessor. We train him. The state says he must have training. I'm under the same assumption that the training has to be done by our town attorney every year. I know the judges have to go to training every year, as does our code enforcement And we're taking the most trained individual out of the picture. And you have to get enabling legislation to do this, signed off by the governor and the state assembly and the state senate. Then you must go to Dutchess County Legislature and get them to approve this plan also. And then you have to go to the school and get their approval. I do not know if you have to go to the village of Red Hawk or the village of Tivoli. I'm not certain of that. So we have all these costs. If all the properties, which are approximately 243 properties, decide they would like to apply, and at some point, they are all involved in this program, that's almost a full-time job for someone to oversee. Now we go back to the monitoring, exactly what town supervisors should train for, a little bit of it. Another problem is, we in the town of Red Hawk do not have a map and a chart of some kind explaining what properties are under conservation easement, and a map showing exactly where the parcels are. There are all kinds of maps. I've received all kinds of information. It is very convoluted and very tough to delineate exactly what is what. Mary Ann has spent an enormous amount of time trying to ascertain this information. We have a map that we found in the town hall of Red Hawk dated April 13, 2012. And it shows all kinds of land that's under conservation easement, and public-owned parks, total preserved land. It's stating that there's 5,188 acres of preserved land in the town of Red Hawk. Well, if you look at our chart that Mary Ann put together, she spent an inordinate amount of time putting that together and trying to come up with numbers, et cetera. She says we have 4,020 acres. Town of Red Hawk needs to ascertain from Winnicky Land Trust, the Dutchess Land Conservatory, the scenic Hudson, the state of New York, the federal government, and the town spent millions of dollars in preservation of properties in the town. The planning board in the '90s preserved most of the golf course. But a lot of people forgot that, and it's been lost in paperwork, buried in some drawer in the planning department, but most of the property at the golf course, the Red Hawk Course, is under some sort of protection plan that the planning board negotiated with the developers when they built the townhomes. We, the town of Red Hawk, for their planning board, their zoning board, and the town board, zoning officer, and the building inspector, and the assessor should have documentation and a map. The most important thing is a map to show you what parcels are under conservation easement of some kind. We don't have that. We have all kinds of stuff, but we don't have it all under one nice neat package that can be followed very easily. And that's going to take some time. I've had discussions with our assessor. He doesn't have that information. I've received information from Sue. I've received other things from the town, and it's just, it's here, there, but it's not in a nice neat package where the zoning board, the planning board, the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector, and the assessor can follow. And that is very important, because as time rolls on, memories fade, and then we could have a house built on a piece of property that a house shouldn't be built on. It happened in the city of Kingston a few years ago. And then they went to court, and there was all kinds of court action, and they had maybe a possibility of getting the house or the home, and, you know, I forget the end result, but it hit the papers, and it was in the papers for quite a while. We should have a nice informational packet for all the different boards, town board, et cetera, so everybody knows. We're all on the same footprint. We're all on the same page. With all that said, we have spent a lot of money to preserve property. I voted yes for our Purchase Developmental Rights Act in, I think, '02. I forget exactly what year it was. I think it's a good program. On the other hand, this program, based on the information that I have received, I believe the assessor's doing his job. And how many more hits are we supposed to take to preserve land? We're paying one pocket to the federal government, one pocket to the state, one pocket to the county, one pocket to the town of Red Hawk. And now we've got to pay another pocket to the town of Red Hawk. And then the village residents have no say in it. They have to pay for it, but they can't even become part of the program if they would like to. That seems unfair to them. So in all of this, I would like to state that the town of Red Hawk bought property, or Town of Red Hawk, Red Park Two. That's what I call it, Two. I'm living in Avenue, and it sits dormant, because we don't have any money. Now, if the town decides, they could do some stuff down there without a lot of money. We have a highway department that if we decide to use highway workers, a couple highway workers, and put them, I believe, in a fund, they could spend a couple of weeks down there working on the Aspen Wall Way bike path, instead of hiring private contractors. We could dig a ditch for the waterline that you'd like to build, instead of trying to get a grant for $70,000. We have a backup, and that's nice digging earth up there. Not too much rock in that particular zone. Could just be a farm. I know the property as well as you do, and we could do those sort of things. We've got to sort of think outside the box. But we haven't done anything because you tell us no money. But now we're looking at the possibility of spending, I don't know how much money, and then telling the taxpayers they've got to pay for it with another pocket in this sort of economy. Please take that all into consideration. I'm for saving farms. I'm for saving Red Hawk. I am a Red Hawk resident. I was born and raised here, and I, you know, I have feelings for my town. With all that said, though, how much more are you going to stretch to senior citizens? Please think about all those consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I think we've probably spent as much time as we can do tonight. So I commend this to the town board for study, and I take seriously, John, your comment about there not being one map, one place where we can go for details about all the preserved properties in town. And I think that's a very important observation, if it's true. I thought we came really close with the community preservation fund map in showing what existed at a point in time. It's a moving target because we've recently just closed on another 158 acres, so when that happens, then that map changes and the details about it change. But nevertheless, the observation is a good one, and I think that's something to be recommended, and we should take that seriously. Hopefully, by the end of 2013, that map won't change that much anymore, but we'll see. We'll see how many people wish to apply for community preservation funding or whatever other avenues they have to preserve land. But I'll remember that and try to keep that on our, up on our agenda, because I think that's an important thing, to have that tool, that map.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we'll move on to, if we may, to the reorganization, which is the last item on our agenda before some correspondence. Every year, we look at our town appointments and our annual reorganization. And we have in front of us, I believe you all have, the Town of Red Hawk Resolution Number, and I presume it would be number one, would it not, for January 8th?
Yes.
Relating to annual reorganization, and Christine has provided us with, actually, it's a three-page, four-page document, but the pages are really Page One and Two.
It's just like One and Two, the others from the-
Yeah, and the others are the town clerks. So I'm going to ask from my right, Bill O'Neill, if you can read One, Two, and Three. Be it resolved with the town board of the town. Can we go through these, Christine? You know, write through them and then vote? We don't have to take them one at a time, surely? Okay.
Number One, the meeting dates would be in each month at 7:30, the second Tuesday and the fourth Wednesday. Additional special meetings may be scheduled and announced by posting the announcement to town halls required by town code, with notification to the press as required by Public Officer's Law. Number Two, that the official newspapers would be for 2013, the Gitcher Journal and the Kingston Freeman. And number Three, that the depositories, the financial institutions, shall be the official depositories of the town for all town monies for 2013, would be Q Bank, M&amp;T Bank, and JP Morgan Chase Bank.
Well, you're doing so well, Wynt. Just keep Red Hawk going.
Number Four, the penny cash pursuant to Section 64 of the town law. The following offices are authorized to maintain a penny cash fund in the following amounts, and they're not to exceed $200 per officer or $1,000 per receiver. That'd be the town clerk as the receiver, $500. Number Five, the salaries to be paid, the town board of the town of Red Hawk for elected officials for 2013 supervisor, $26,992. Each town board member, $7,578. The town clerk, $48,722. Each town justice, $15,583. The highway superintendent, $57,222. Number Six, the mileage reimbursement rate, the town board would establish the mileage reimbursement rate of .565 cents per mile for those town officials and employees who incur official mileage when they are obligated to drive their own vehicles on town business or when a town vehicle is not available.
Joe, could I just interrupt? It's .565 cents.
.565 cents. Oh, dollars.
Fifty, you know, it's fifty-six and a half cents. Just to be clear, okay.
Yeah, 0.565 percent a dollar. And for the year, the payments would be made only after submission, review, and approval of the appropriate voucher by the town supervisor. Number Seven, the undertaking, the town board of the town of Red Hawk would hereby authorize the execution of a blanket bond in lieu of individual undertaking pursuant to the Public Officer's Law for the purpose of covering all officers and employees who collect money, including supervisor, the town clerk, the business manager, the justices, the justice court clerks, the superintendent of highways, and the receiver of taxes. And lastly, number Eight, check signing. The town board of the town of Red Hawk would hereby authorize the following, to sign checks, bank checks for all the town business. One, the supervisor Sue Crane. Two, in her absence, deputy supervisor James Ross. And three, in the absence of the supervisor and the deputy supervisor, any of the board members, Harry Colgan, Bill O'Neill, or Brenda Cabello, or James Ross, that he's the deputy supervisor.
Right. Those are the resolutions, and I would ask for a motion to resolve that, and we'll do this by roll call. Is there a motion to present? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just to clarify that the Observer is not a weekly, is that, that's why it cannot be one of the official newspapers?
Oh, good. Thank you, Brenda. Yep.
It's not a weekly, is that?
Is that, that is the reason?
Well, the only, there's no reason. I mean, these are the same ones we've had before, so you all can talk about changing any of the information in this, but I would say that the newspaper needs to be a weekly newspaper in order to be an official newspaper, according to the current definition of the-
Yeah, and that's bi-monthly, is it not? Yeah. Okay. Any further comments? So by roll call, all in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I. Thank you all very much. Okay. If we can turn them to the 2013 appointments. We are down now to Safety Officer. Do you need a copy, Harry?
January 3.
I don't have my paper here, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, you can, you can come out with me or Bill.
Sure.
I'm Bill.
Okay.
It's on my kitchen cabinet.
Well, this is, I think it's quite the same one as the last one, which is 2027. No, no.
Maybe minor changes, but we'll address them as we go along. So Brenda-
And there were some corrections in this one that I handed out, so.
Right. Brenda, would you start with Safety Officer, and we'll just run through these down to maybe Assistant Town Historian? Thank you.
The Safety Officer is the Highway Superintendent, is, this is what you want me to do, sir?
Yes.
The disaster preparedness and civil defense emergence. Is that all, is the next thing? That's all together, right?
That's Supervisor.
Is that all of that?
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yes.
Okay, so the disaster preparedness and civil defense emergency interim successors are in order. The Supervisor, Sue Crane, Teresa Burke, Jim Ross, and Harry Colgan. Receiver of taxes, Sue McCann. Registrar of vital statistics, Sue McCann. Water rents collector, Sue McCann. Issuing agent handicapped parking permits, Sue McCann. Assessor for a six-year appointment is Scott Hobson, and his appointment was January 31st of 11.
Okay, I was just going to say, you don't really have to read the numbers, but-
Building Inspector Two, Stephen Cole. Zoning Enforcement Officer, Building Inspector, part-time, Robert Fennell. Director of Purchasing, Ted Kudzie. Animal Control Officer, Stephanie Fitzpatrick. Panda representative from town, Mary Ann Harvey. We have no panda alternate at this time. Buildings and grounds, it's the Supervisor and the Highway Superintendent. Justice Court Clerks, part-time, are Nancy Roberts and Catherine Fell. Attorney is working for the Highway Department, but might be willing to serve as this building's for one of the- for want of a better term, Maintenance Officer. And so Ted has compiled a list of responsibilities, and we will be working with Teresa in the week ahead, actually, very soon, to come up with a way that we can maybe get some relief here in this building by someone who knows what they're doing, rather than having to contract out as things go wrong. And we do have some very real talent at the Highway Garage and among the employees there. So Teresa and I and Ted and Debbie will be talking about this, and we'll, more to come on that. But I did want to add that. Town Clerk appointments. Harry, do you want to start with, let's see, where are we? Justice Court clerks? I don't think we did yours either, Sue. Oh, sorry.
Maybe stopped at Town Engineer.
Town Engineer. Okay. Town Engineer. Supervisors appointments, sorry, I can do that. Supervisors appointments, Deputy Supervisor James Ross, Budget Officer Rose Ryder, Confidential Secretary to the Supervisor and Board Linda Stoddard, Town Historian Winthrop Aldrich, Assistant to the Town Historian Patsy Vogel. Harry, could you start at Town Clerk's appointments?
Deputy, excuse me. Deputy Town Clerk Clara Horst. Deputy Register of Vital Statistics Clara Horst. Deputy Receiver of Taxes Clara Horst. Highway Superintendent Appointments. Deputy Superintendent of Highways is Richard Schloemer. Other Town Employees Officers. Highway Secretary part-time is Jeanette Walker Walter. Assistant Budget Officer is Deborah Marks.
Coon.
It should be Coon.
That's right.
That's my error, yes.
Deborah Coon, we're gonna change that.
We need to correct that twice in there.
That's corrected several times a day as we walk around.
Yes, it is.
Business Manager Human Resources is Deborah Coon. Bookkeeper, bookkeeping report part-time is Catherine Fell.
And may I interrupt now, because I want to get approval from the Board to change the Assessor's Clerk part-time to Deputy Assessor. I looked at the county's job description and our job description, and with all of the work she's done for the last three months, going out and doing some of the actual data collection and so on, the job description of Deputy Assessor is totally appropriate for her, and I would like to change her job title from Assessor Clerk to Deputy Assessor. And so I would move to do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Shall I continue?
And you? Yes, please.
Deputy Assessor Diana Pichiano. Transfer Station Operator TJ Hackett. Solid Waste Attendants Kevin Wiley and William...
Sigathey.
Sigathey. Maintenance of Grounds Keeper is Tom Peters, Don Whipple, and Howie Callis. Recreation Park and Program Director John Coon. Water District Meter Readers part-time are Cynthia Files, John Wittenberg, and Chris Gifford. Contracts Consultants are Town Physician at St. Francis, Northern Duchess Hospital. Attorney Keenan Bean. Water District Operator of the RI Environmental Services. Computer Software, Software Consulting Associates. Planner is Green Plan Inc. Town Accountant is Ray Shilley's. Custodial Services, Polite Cleaning Services. Police and Court Attendants, the Village of Red Hook Police Department, Duchess County Sheriff's Deputy's. Appointments are annual unless otherwise noted.
And I would like to add, too, if we might, maybe Sue, after Town Accountant, between Town Accountant and Custodial Services, if we could make note that the Town CPA that we have used for Special is Lori Doughty. All I could think of was Margaret.
That's okay.
Sorry. Yeah, Lori was great, and came in and helped, and she was wonderful, so...
So then the Town CPA would be Lori?
Lori Doughty. Right. And so maybe we can, appointments are annual. Just before we go further, June 8th of 2010, Town Board voted unanimously that any and all Town Committee Appointees must be residents of the Town of Red Hook. And I guess we, I would like to just have us take as a whole this, and move to appoint these positions. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Bill, if you could start with meetings, I think we've done some of these, and you did it, so maybe you'll remember, so we won't have to repeat them.
We did the Town Board meetings.
Yeah, we did most of these, didn't we?
The Boardman Heads and Committee Chairs administer reports monthly by noon on the Friday before the second Board meeting of the month. The Annual Committee and the Boardman Hour Report should be submitted by noon on the Friday before the second Board meeting, starting in February. The CAC is required to present an annual report by April 1st, and the REC Commission is required to present an annual report also by April 1st. The Town Board Organizational Responsibility is as follows. Supervisor, Deputy Supervisor, the Town Board Members in alphabetical order, Brenda Cagle, Harry Colgan, William O'Neill, and James Ross. Mileage is .55 dollar per mile.
We just changed that.
We just changed that.
.565.
.5, .565.
That's just because that's the IRS.
I think we're using just, I think we're just using 56.
Well, we just changed it to 56.
Oh, you think you want to stay with that?
We did that a few minutes ago.
Yeah, I know we did. I just thought it was kind of silly, a half a cent, half of a half a cent.
It's easier if you're, follow the same rule for everyone, I think.
Right, okay. Okay.
Now, the Chain of Command for Town Departments, the Department Head, Deputy Department Head, if one exists, Supervisor, and then the Town Board Liaison. Liaisons to the Town Departments, I'll give the Department first, the function, and then the liaison. Assessor Sue Crane, Attorney Sue Crane, Bar College Sue Crane, Bookkeeper Sue Crane. Building Inspector James Ross and Bill O'Neill. The Dog Control Brenda Cagle. Fire Companies, James Ross and Bill O'Neill. The Highway Department, Sue Crane and Harry Colgan. Purchasing, Harry Colgan. Recycling, Brenda Cagle. Red Hook Central School District, Brenda Cagle and Bill O'Neill. The Special Projects Inter-Municipal Task Force, Harry Colgan and Bill O'Neill. The Town Clerk, James Ross and Sue Crane. Village of Red Hook, James Ross and Bill O'Neill. And the Village of Tivoli, Harry Colgan and Brenda Cagle. The Boarding Committee Liaisons...
Excuse me, can I just interrupt? I think we should correct Dog Control to say Animal Control, just on that page, because that's what the county has...
Yes, Animal Control Officer, right, okay.
Yes. We'll say Animal Control for that.
Also, Bill, I was thinking maybe you and I ought to change on the villages, since I live in the Village of Red Hook, and...
Okay.
Does that matter?
No, it's okay.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Then the Board and Committee Liaisons, Ag and Open Space Board, which also includes PDR Coordination and the Limited Term Conservation Easement Review, is Bill O'Neill. The Board of Assessment and Review, Sue Crane. Conservation Advisory Council, Brenda Cagle and Bill O'Neill. The Design Review and Hamlet Committee, Harry Colgan. Disaster Preparedness, Sue Crane. Economic Development, Harry Colgan. The Board of Ethics, Harry Colgan.
I would like to serve on that as well.
Planning Board, Brenda Cagle and Jim Ross. The REC Commission, Harry Colgan and Bill O'Neill. Senior Services Committee, Brenda Cagle and Sue Crane. Greenway and Trails Committee, Brenda Cagle.
Excuse me, so you had said today you wanted to be there for that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe I need to be on the Senior Services Committee. Brenda has taken it over and taken it over beautifully. Do you need a backup, Brenda?
Um, no, but I'd be happy to have you there.
Thank you.
Tree Preservation Commission, Brenda Cagle. Water District Number 1 Advisory Board, Jim Ross. The Zoning Board of Appeals, Jim Ross and Bill O'Neill. The IT Committee, Sue Crane. St. Margaret's Committee, Harry Colgan.
That one will be changed. Jim Ross has agreed to serve as liaison to St. Margaret's Committee, if they will change their meeting date and time so that he can be there. So we're going to try that. We'll see if we can work that out.
We do have, we do have the issue of the renovation report on there, that we haven't really identified that as a separate committee.
No.
And we've been...
No, there's no reason to, do you think?
Well, no, except that...
Did you want to stay on? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I've been up to my ears in the renovation of the building.
Do you want to stay on, then?
And I, I'm not sure that should be part of, it has not been part of the committee activities. They've been assigned as a fundraising entity, you know, in support of the future of the development there. But in terms of the day-to-day management of the building, I have worked on it mostly with John Coon and Doug Struinsky.
Do you want to call that St. Margaret's Buildings and Grounds?
Maybe it'd be wise to create a separate committee, just as that...
How does the Board feel about that?
It sounds like an option of the REC Commission.
I'm sorry?
But it isn't really.
No, I know it's not.
No.
Before you go on, I just noticed when you were reading the Ag and Open Space Advisory Board, there's a note there that talks about PDR Coordination and Limited Term Conservation Easement Review. I don't think that Conservation Easement Review was ever part of that group's task, and I think that we, in reorganizing the CPF and PDR Advisory Committee, talked to the Ag and Open Space Advisory Board about role in PDR, and they really didn't want a coordination role. They were, you know, I think maybe happy to be, you know, informally advisory to people who were applying, but I don't think this is really a correct note for that Board's task, because I understand it exactly right. I think I would take that, parent that aloud.
So we are at Zoning Review Committee, Bill?
The Zoning Review Committee is Bill O'Neill. The CPF PDR Advisory Committee is Harry Colgan and Sue Crane. Sister Cities Working Group, Sue Crane. And that gets us to the committee appointments.
So maybe I would like then to ask for our approval as we have discussed these various appointments. Is there a motion?
No.
Second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Harry, do you want to start on the next page, Page 4, Town Board Committee Appointments?
Should be 2013, right?
Yeah, it should say 2013.
At the top of Page 4.
Committee members are expected to attend two-thirds or more of scheduled meetings. That's understood. Failure to do so may result in removal from the committee. I get to say all the bad stuff.
Okay.
Okay, starting with Ag and Open Space Advisory.
When Harry votes your vote, as they say in the old school. Ag and Open Space Advisory Committee is nine members. Co-Chairs are Norman, Greg, and Peter Hubble. Now, there would be, how do we even want to do that? Because their appointment was due 2012, so they need to...
That's an annual appointment for Chair.
For Chair.
Yes.
Right. And we haven't had a discussion with them, have we?
Have you, Bill?
No.
Then I would, yeah, I would suggest that we hold the Chair appointments until we've all had as liaisons chance to confirm with the persons that they are willing to continue to serve.
Also, I don't know which ones, I mean, I'm assuming everybody would want to stay on there, but I don't know.
Right, we have sent, right, we have sent a memo to all of the Chairs, and only heard back from the ZBA, I think, as to the composition of the committee and that people do want to stay on. So we may need to just run through these and see where there are vacancies tonight, and confirm the actual committees at the next meeting on the 4th Wednesday. So on this page, the Ag and Open Advisory, are there any vacancies? I see none, right? Is that right?
Pete told me that St. Margaret's is not getting on.
Yeah, I've heard.
Okay, so that's, that's...
It's a room category, though.
That's a possible vacancy. Well, I'll pencil that in, and we'll find out about that, okay? Any others that you have?
He doesn't want to be Chairman anymore.
He does not? Okay. Okay.
And Norman hasn't come to a meeting, so, I mean, he handed in resignation, and we don't know if he's on or not.
Okay. So what I'll do is, maybe I'll give Pete and Norman a call, and find out their intentions before the next meeting. Okay, I think that's the best we can do with that committee right now. I see that Marion Johnson also is, would be reappointed if she's willing to stay on, and Michael Robertson. So we'll need to query those people and find out their intentions. Okay, the Assessment Review Board, I believe, is set. We took care of that in September.
Dominic has resigned.
Oh, is there a vacancy? I did not know that.
Dominic Scarpola resigned.
Okay. All right.
When did he do that?
He sent a letter, or someone told me, was the Assessor, we should check that. I thought there was a letter.
I didn't see it. I don't, McCann should have a letter.
Yeah, I didn't receive it, I don't think.
I saw it something, and then he had moved out of town.
Well, maybe, so could you give a call and find out if this is the Assessment Review Board of Review?
Assessment Review.
Yeah, could you try to...
Unless it was all that, maybe.
No, oh, you mean, had reported it?
Maybe. I don't remember.
I had not heard that.
I don't remember that.
I don't see it among my correspondence.
I think we should check.
Okay. I'll get that.
Okay, all right. So we'll just, that's a question. All right, where are we?
Okay, that goes to the CPF.
CPF looks like the full committee if all are willing to serve.
Yeah.
We'll try to get the answer to that by the next meeting. Conservation Advisory Council, Brenda, do you know about their intentions? Is everyone staying on?
I think that, there may be one question.
Okay, all right. Could you check on that and report back at the next meeting, then? Okay, Brenda, I think your design review, Hamlet...
No, I think that's Harry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Harry.
Harry, this is a committee by your code with five to nine members with two...
We need to get members there.
Right.
And Chris Bill's, I'm sure.
Residents of Red Hook, three residents are to be from within the Hamlet District. And the remaining two members are supposed to represent specialized disciplines, disciplines with specialized expertise, such as archaeologist, architect, landscape, architect, or builder. That's what your code says.
Could I have a copy of that, when you jabbed it in your hand in the veranda?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's just straight out of your code, but I'll...
Take me a half hour to find it.
Yeah.
Now, in terms of disaster preparedness, I believe all of the members remain the same, except for the Police Department Representative, who is Patrick Hildenbrand. Otherwise, I think, I think they're all remaining the same. I'll check on the Red Hook Fire Company. I'm not certain about that. I'm fairly certain about the Tivoli Fire Company rep, but I will check on that Red Hook Fire Company and confirm next time. Okay. Economic Development Committee, who's liaison? Harry, are you?
Uh, yeah. And, uh, there were no, there's a meeting, Ms. Fersley, I'll review it with him then.
Good.
And this looks, this looks...
This looks complete to me as a...
So, if you would just check with those whose term expired in 2012 to confirm that they would be willing to serve for an additional two years? Okay. And Ethics Board, I can certainly check with Father Cartier and Gail Nussbaum, who would be expiring this year. Otherwise, I think... And we have a secretary vacancy there.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Let's see what we can do about that. Greenway and Trails, is that you, Brenda?
It is, and I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
But I'll check.
I think Roseanne Fritz, was she filling an unexpired term? Is that why she's up?
Uh, yes.
2012? Okay. Okay, so if you could confirm with all those members that they are willing to re-up? Thank you. And the IT Committee, I believe, is complete and willing to continue. Bill, intermunicipal shared... Oh, I guess that's Harry. Sorry. That's kind of a committee that we really all need to pay attention to this year.
And you're part of that.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to really have to...
We need to make that move.
Yeah. Is six members the limit to the number of members we can have on that committee, Chris? Is that by statute?
I think it's just a task force that you guys...
Yeah.
At your discretion.
So, we can do... Yeah, I think we said two members from each municipality, but I think we could do better than that, and maybe we'll turn our attention to that in the week ahead. Bill, I'm sorry, intermunicipal task force.
Well, yeah, we've got David Pearson. I don't know if he's still interested in coming back, but...
And Tim, that's Tim's last name. The fellow who showed up from Tivoli, who... The fellow who is an engineer, lives... A neighbor lives in Tivoli.
Tim.
Came to a meeting about two weeks ago and missed some because of the holidays. And he's someone we should consider. He has great credentials.
Tim from Tivoli.
And all of a sudden, I can't. He didn't... He didn't vote for me now.
Good.
He's on the plan.
Do we...
Tim Lynch.
Lynch, okay. Yes.
Who's David Pearson?
He's from the Village Planning Board.
Oh, yeah. Those are Red Hook.
Red Hook, yes.
Red Hook, yes.
That would be great. We had those two.
So, those two, David Pearson and Tim Lynch.
That would be great. So, the next time you meet, you'll confirm with Brent and Charlie Lang and...
Yep.
Okay.
Charlie Lang has been a regular participant.
And Susan has been coming also, right?
Yes, she has.
Okay, good.
These are suggested.
Okay. Planning Board, Bill, I'll let you carry that one. Or is it yours? It's Brenda's. I'm sorry, it's Brenda's. You and Jim Ross.
Oh, well, yes. And Chris's recent resignation, so...
Yes, right. So, we have a vacancy.
We have one alternate.
Chris Munn just resigned.
Oh, I thought we had one in the wings, you know?
Has there Turk been in?
Yeah, Michelle was an alternate.
Right, and she moved up as a member.
She also?
When Patrick left.
When Patrick left.
Oh, okay.
So, we have no alternates.
Okay.
And a vacancy.
And we have an opening now then?
So, we have a vacancy and two alternate vacancies.
Because of Chris, none.
Okay, so, that's important that we...
We have seven members, right?
We have one, two, three...
Oh, we do have seven members. You know, I don't think Michelle moved up, did she? That was Betty Carr that moved up.
That's what I thought.
I don't think Michelle moved up.
Mm-hmm.
Could I be...
I think the last... The last board meeting, she was indicated as an alternate.
Alternate. That's what I thought.
I thought she was.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, what's the head count here?
Okay, and in which case, we have Michelle Turk at this moment as a vacant... As an alternate?
Yes, I think so.
And there is a vacancy, so we'll have to make a decision.
Monday.
Okay. All right, and that was the Chris Munn slot. Okay.
I mean, unless somebody else is not here, it shouldn't be good.
No, that's right.
Okay. So, will you have a conversation with Michelle?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So, then you'd be looking for an alternate.
Well, two, I mean, we...
We've had two in the past, yeah. Yeah, that's worked out well when these sudden vacancies occur, especially in planning and ZBA, really important boards.
Or, oh, yes, or would she just be... So, she would fill out Chris's term, oh, which ends this year anyway? Is that how it works?
It would end at... The end of 2000... Isn't it the end of 2013?
Yeah. That would be Chris's term.
Chris would be the... Through 2013.
Okay.
Because it looks like Chris Kane's term is up this year, so...
So, there are only two alternates.
That would be the one that would be reappointed, and then she... I guess Michelle, if she was going to be appointed to Chris's position, would still be on the schedule.
So, it would make her 2013.
Correct.
So, you'll confirm with Christine Kane, her interest in remaining as chair, and re-upping for another appointment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then we don't have any alternates?
Right, so, we need to publicize that.
It would be helpful for everyone... Yeah, yeah. We'll publicize it and coax the audience, if there's any remaining tonight, to express interest to the town clerk, if they are interested in the planning board, because those are really important volunteers. Okay, Rec Commission, Harry or Bill, one of you?
And I think what you have... We have here is correct. They meet next... I believe it's next Monday.
Okay.
And the review of them.
Good.
But they're all regular attendees.
Okay. And St. Margaret's Committee, I believe we need reappointments of most everybody. There is a vacancy through the resignation of Patrick Hildenbrand. Ralph Fresenda is the only... No, Rosemary and Ralph are the two that are through this year. The others need to be reappointed. So, we'll get...
I resigned.
I'm sorry, you did.
You're not on the list, Harry, I don't think.
Well, she's not on the list.
You're not on this list, sorry. There is a vacancy and... Or two vacancies, actually. Three vacancies. Patrick and Linda and another. Okay, so, that committee's going to need some work. Okay, Senior Services, Brenda, you'll check with everybody there. Sheila came in today, hale and hearty, and is looking forward to joining that committee again next month. She feels very good. She looks wonderful.
Oh, and we have an interested person.
Oh, good. Okay. So, the Sister Cities Working Group is kind of an ad hoc committee, is... I think of it anyway. And there has been some interest expressed in expanding the committee. It's not has... It hasn't any constitutional numbers associated with it, does it? Did we ever pass anything that said that Sister Cities had to be a certain number?
I don't remember.
Again, just a board committee?
That's what I thought, yeah. So, I'll be meeting with them next week, and we'll talk about additional members who are interested. Tree Preservation Committee, I believe that committee stands as is, and the members are interested in being re-upped for two-year appointments, if I'm not mistaken.
I haven't heard otherwise. Linda's given us the thumbs up.
Right. And the Water Board, I believe, remains the same. I spoke with Hank about that, and I think everybody remains interested and committed. So, we would be reappointing Richard Franklin for two more years, Nick Anis for two more years, Hank for two more years, and Hank as chair again. And I would make that motion.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Toby, I'm wondering if anyone really voted on was the Water District.
The Water District, and I think we can safely vote on the Tree Preservation Committee, because I believe that's... Don't you, Brenda?
I think...
I think that's solid.
You think they want to stay?
I think they do. Do you want to check on it?
Cateret?
I wouldn't say no.
Would you like to check? You'd like to check before we vote?
Mr. Linda, I haven't been able to make the last couple of meetings, but if they've discussed it...
We didn't really have an open discussion, but nobody said that they didn't want to get off. Everybody's...
Okay, let's go ahead with that. I'm all right, let's go.
That's the motion?
Sure. I do.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals. Bill, have you attended any of these meetings, and do you know the inclination of the members?
Well, no, but we got Nick Anis's letter, you know?
It's right here, yeah.
Everybody wants to stay on.
Yes.
There is, of course, you know, the subject we keep putting off about whether it's seven or five. So, I think all the board members should, you know, come up with a position on that Again, it's a little awkward with our town laws, right? You know, some references to seven members and others to five, so, we do have to reconcile that somewhere. But I think we had talked over the past year or two of doing it, just by, you know, the matter of attritions, people leave the committee. My understanding is that the chairman still would prefer five.
Well, if you do decide to go in that direction, though, I think you need to, you know, modify your...
We have to. We shouldn't mitigate it.
Because otherwise, we still have when we need to make a vote, and we need that, you know, that's the full number of the committee, and we, you know, we're going to end up with situations where you don't have enough people to vote.
The local law we have today mixes up the number five and seven, and it certainly wouldn't pass muster.
You've seen that reference, right, where we say that our...
We discussed that at the beginning of last year, and I think that...
Just wanted to reconcile.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't hurt anybody.
It should be... It should be correct.
You won't...
And if it's still consistent with what Nick Anis recommends, you know, then we might be wise to do it.
Okay, well, you all can... If you let me know what...
I'm not willing to do it without the full board. I think we need to all discuss it.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Okay, so, we'll wait until Jim is back on board to discuss that next time. Zoning Review Committee, Bill, I think you're that as well. I...
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, again, they didn't meet toward the end of the year. There wasn't any agenda for them, but I haven't yet spoken to Susan, see what their position is, or her position. We haven't heard from her, right?
I have not have not...
Actually, there was an email from Linda Stoddard saying that she would like to be on the board.
But does anybody say they want to get off?
Emails I saw, I did not see anybody wanting to get off.
Well, she wanted to join the board, right?
No, she wanted to stay on. Susan signed it.
As the secretary.
Who's the secretary?
As the secretary. Linda Stoddard.
Oh, Linda Stoddard's the secretary of the board, yes.
Yes, that's... She is and is still willing as best I can do. So, that's it for tonight. I think that's all we can do tonight. I think that Zoning Review Committee remains the same. I haven't heard anyone who's burning to get off. I will confirm that. Okay.
So, do we have a policy about being on more than one board or something like that? Can we discuss that before?
We've discussed it. I don't know that we ever established a policy. We've tried not to duplicate appointments just from a practical matter of burning someone out. Frankly, I think that's...
I think that's the conversation we had.
I think that's as close as it comes. So, and the question is, because? Is there someone?
No, I'm just curious, because it, you know, once in a while, it comes up.
So, that's all I have. There is correspondence here somewhere, and I'm not sure if I have it or one of you has it.
I did have it.
Okay. I think it may be in the other room. I don't think I brought it with me, and it isn't crucial. It was simply...
Here it is, if you want it.
Ah, thank you. I think I referred to this before, but it bears saying again that we really need all of us on the board, and anyone out there who has interest in shared services, has ideas about shared services, has experienced or witnessed shared services that have worked in other communities, we need all the help we can get on this, because we really are going to be very seriously putting together an application for this Dutchess County Shared Services Grant Program, which has a total of $2 million available in 2013, and the application's coming up this month. So, I'm hoping that I can contact one or more of you and ask you to work with me on that application, and invite all of the public to have input in that regard, because it's an important... It's an important agenda item for us in the year ahead, at least me personally, and I think the whole board is with me on this. Okay.
And there will be some presentations from the Northern Dutchess Alliance on this from...
Thank you, Brenda.
From the professionals over at Newcall, so put it together.
Yes, and are you interested in setting a date for that now, or do you want to talk...
Well, we have a preliminary presentation to the... And they were looking for its site, right? I volunteered our site here, which would be in the morning of the 21st.
Okay.
With Jerry Benjamin from Newcall.
So, what...
And that's as preliminary to the invitation you have.
What day is... What day is that?
I think it's 21st.
Let me look. January 21st?
Monday, that's what I thought, okay.
Okay. And it would be here in Town Hall?
Well, it's actually Martin Luther King Day, and we're closed.
Oh, thanks. Yeah. So, we had no choice but to set that day anyway.
So, you're going to have it anyway?
Well, but it'll be somewhere, and I couldn't get a commitment from them as to whether... to whether it, I, I just offered our Town Hall.
Okay.
And I'll open the building for everything.
Now, wait a minute, that's, what did, the 21st, okay.
21st.
And you think maybe 10 o'clock?
Probably, uh, may, our meetings normally are at 8:30.
That's an unsodly hour.
So can I just, while you're doing what you are, so, just to remind you that the annual accounting, school justices and the tax collector and clerk needs to be done by June or end of, I think it's the 20th?
Of January? Oh, okay. I know, I know that Lori made that observation and said, let's get at it right away.
I just wanna make sure.
When we turn the calendar, so thank you for reminding us. You'll contact her in that regard?
Right.
Lori, yeah, Lori, to do the...
Well, she, no, Debbie does that.
Debbie does it, okay. Okay, I'll remind Deb to get on that, okay. All right, that's all I have. Anyone? Thank you all for your help with that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a adjournment?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Public comment.
I beg your pardon. I should've known that you haven't been waiting patiently just to watch us adjourn. John, you must have public comments.
Yes, I do.
Please step up to the microphone. We appreciate your coming and giving us your insights.
How often come to a board meeting?
I know it isn't and I'm happy that you did.
Something, something here, my heart is solar power. I've discussed this with the Town Board before, past years, and it's still not done. Rec Park, we have roofs over at the Rec Park where we put solar panels on, work with nicer like you did here, get them onto the buildings over there, help the town decrease our costs long-term. We need to decrease our costs long-term and we have a roof, roofs over there and we could, they could be installed. You did a beautiful job here on the Town Hall, expanded the ones on the Town Hall. I think it'd be most appropriate.
We have an agenda. The next one is to do our back here.
Well, no, you got the, you have the, uh, building with the, uh, with the cafeteria where they, you know, you get snacks and stuff, and then you have the other building where you have your maintenance equipment.
We've had a conversation with the CAC to keep their eyes and ears open for an exhortant grant for the highway garage, which is the size of a football field.
And, and the way you work that is you get a contractor in and he does all the paperwork for you.
Yeah, we're, we're, we have, we're, we're in line.
In Hudson Solar, they come up for free and they do all the paperwork for you. All you, it's just a little time, here's the building, they do all the measurements, they do all the engineering.
That's what we've got to do for them.
And then they come back and tell you what the deal is.
So you're suggesting the snack bar and the maintenance building at the Rec Park?
Yeah, and the town highway garage, perfect.
Well, John, when we wrote the grants for the, the panels on top of the Town Hall, the big expansion for the firehouse, they did look at that area and I think, uh, for some reason it wasn't suitable, but they did check that area. I can check into it.
It may have been the shade around the snack bar, I'm not sure there's enough...
Where spacing or something?
I'm not sure there's enough sun by where the roof...
The other direction is that it faces east.
Right, but we can look into it.
Well, I know, I know garage that has less, uh, footprint than the snack bar and the maintenance shed and, uh, that, that's doing wonderful for the owner of the property. Very, he's very, very happy with the results of the solar panels that he has on his...
We haven't ever turned any of them down.
Next issue, water lines.
Yes.
Some of those water lines were put in the 1950s. Highly suggested the Town Board sit down with Hank Van Paris, come up with some sort of ad-warm tax like they did with the, uh, water tank and do a thousand linear feet or 2,000 linear feet, come up with some sort of normal, some sort of routine where we do so much a year and we don't borrow, pay as we go to upgrade our water lines. I read an article recently that the state says that we're in serious trouble with, is bridges and roads, water lines, sewer lines, uh, so, and our lines are 50, some of them are 50 years old.
Okay.
And if we did a, come up with a nice plan where we don't borrow, we, we get, we pay a little bit more on our water bills and, and then we replace, you know, a little bit every year, uh, then that would keep us out of trouble where, uh, I remember one year that the Town High Park said, okay, all of a sudden they had to borrow $6 million because we got the road maintenance. Well, our town of Red Hook, we do so much a year in road maintenance to keep, so we don't have to borrow money, we pay as we go. That's the way we need to operate and we, we haven't done anything to our water lines in the, in the Water District. So that's, uh, I brought this up to Hank numerous different occasions, still there's no, nothing been done. So it's something that needs to be done. We just can't, all of a sudden they fail and then all of a sudden you gotta go to the Water District and the 460 people say, oh, we gotta come up with $8 million or $6 million, whatever the number is.
Have you talked with Jim, who's the liaison, to bring that to the Water Board at the next meeting?
Well, I didn't think I needed to because I talked to Hank Van Paris as the chairman.
Oh, okay, you already have, all right.
And I, I brought this up on numerous occasions over numerous years and since I was sitting here, it popped in my head again, so I'm bringing it forth again to a different board. Uh, I don't think I ever brought it to the Town Board, I always brought it to the chairman. Now I'm bringing it to the board. This is something that should be considered and, and thought about.
Okay.
We do it a little bit, piecemeal, pay as you go, so we're not overburning the great pairs, but then again, we're not putting them in the position that all of a sudden we got a big major catastrophe. I think in the last year or two years, some sort of ruling from a court or the state or something like that stated that any paperwork you guys are looking at, like you were just looking at all the, we need to see. You gotta provide it to us in paperwork or we need to see all that stuff.
It's been done.
Right there.
Okay.
That's, that's...
But I was thinking maybe you could just have like a, a display, you know, like a whiteboard where you, you know, that way everybody can, it's like projector sort of thing. Just an idea.
Yeah.
As much as possible, Sue McKenna's been trying to put things on the website when they're available and she's been able to put them on the website by public hearing documents and that sort of thing. She's been trying to do that as much as possible, as reasonably practicable and other things, you know, a lot of times things are just available shortly before the meeting, but they go into a public examination folder, at least that's what we've been doing so far.
See, I haven't been on me, I did not realize.
See, there's your documents, John.
Now zoning, I had a discussion with Nick about five members, seven, uh, seven board members, five board members, and I, I couldn't really get out of Nick on why he felt that we needed only five members on the ZBA. But my premise is seven members works. It's worked for a long time. Before I was on the ZBA, we've had seven, we've had different chairman, it's worked for the different chairman, and if it works, why play around with it? But if you're gonna change it, why the ZBA, only the ZBA? Then you should have every board be five members only. If you're gonna change the ZBA, then all the boards should only be five members.
Well, we would change it only because the law says if the town had changed it to five members, but they'd never really formally done that up until...
State law says it.
In our paperwork, it's already been done.
State law says...
Well, then you can change it back and set it.
No, no, you can't.
Why not? Why can't?
Read the state law, read the state law. State law sets the ZBA at five-member board. If you had had a seven-member board, you can leave it seven members, um, but you can't have, you can't revert to a seven-member board if you have a five-member board. And the state recommends and sets it at five members. The Planning Board is set at seven members. Most of the other boards are at the discretion of the town, but the board is, is, is set by state law.
So we've had seven, so we give it a seven?
Um, we can accept that the state, our, our local law is a fair blonde shift, as we say in the old school. In one sense, it refers to itself as five members, in the next sense, it refers to itself as seven members.